I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic which stands on a nation, on a government, with its full liberty and justice for all. Good evening and welcome to Village Hall. Um, we'll have a quick agenda, then trustee's reports, then we'll close that session and close with the meeting and open up for questions, comments, concerns by anyone here in the room and I'll do it. So with that, Ms. Walsh, you can look at your agenda.
Thank you, Mayday Sherrill. I would ask the board to approve the minutes of the regular board of trustees meeting that's held on Tuesday, March first, 2022.
So moved.
I'll second. Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Against? Trust us carefully.
I would ask the board to approve the schedule of accounts payable as follows. General funds: eight hundred sixty-three thousand, eight hundred fifty-one dollars, ten hundred and forty cents. Pool funds: one hundred forty-three dollars, eighty-two cents. Capital: one hundred thirty-seven thousand, seven hundred sixty-nine dollars and fifty cents, worth total of nine hundred and one thousand, seven hundred seventy dollars and twenty-six cents.
I'll offer that resolution. I'll second. Any discussion? Ms. Walsh, could you follow up?
Trustee Kambari, trustee Chang, trustee Chair, trustee Stewart, and Mayday Sherrill.
Aye.
I would ask the board to approve or write by the request to use public facility, excuse me, public facility subject to receive a certificate of insurance and CTC and Department of Guidelines as presented.
So moved.
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Against? Trust us carefully.
I would ask the board to certify the 2022 point three point one assessment fraud in accordance with the real property tax law, section fourteen ten.
I'll offer that. Second.
Any discussion? Ms. Walsh.
Trustee Kambari.
Aye.
Trustee Chang.
Aye.
Trustee Chair.
Aye.
Trustee Stewart.
Aye.
And Mayday Sherrill.
Aye.
I would ask the board to introduce proposed local law number one, 2022, to authorize the village board, if necessary, to override the tax cap imposed by the state of New York, which is presently two point five-five percent of Floral Park.
I'll offer that resolution with the note that the motion says, if necessary.
If it's necessary, I'll second. Any further discussion? Ms. Walsh.
Trustee Kambari.
Aye.
Trustee Chang.
Aye.
Trustee Chair.
Aye.
Trustee Stewart.
Aye.
And Mayday Sherrill.
Aye.
I would ask the board to determine that proposal number one, number one of 2022, authorizing the village board, if necessary, to override the tax cap imposed by the state of New York, which is presently two point five-five percent of Floral Park, is an unlisted, unlisted action and will not have any significant effect on the environment as that term is defined in CEPR.
I'll offer that resolution for the same provider. Second. Any discussion?
Trustee Kambari, trustee Chang.
Aye.
Trustee Chair.
Aye.
Trustee Stewart.
Aye.
And Mayday Sherrill.
Aye.
I would ask the board to approve the proposal of D and B engineers and architects, which are members of current design on Clayton Avenue, and to be part of the reconstruction projects at Hensdale Avenue, Spoon Street, and Spooner Parking Lot, in amounts of fifteen thousand and forty-five dollars, and all present neighbor or village administration to sign this in.
I'll offer the resolution.
Second.
Any discussion? Ms. Walsh.
Trustee Kambari.
Aye.
Trustee Chang.
Aye.
Trustee Chair.
Aye.
Trustee Stewart.
Aye.
And Mayday Sherrill.
Aye.
I would ask the board to grant the application for the special use permit application of Marlow Joseph to the property located at one seventy Jericho Turn by subject to the terms and conditions set forth in the decision and resolution.
I'll offer that. Second.
Any discussion? Ms. Walsh.
Trustee Kambari.
Aye.
Trustee Chang.
Aye.
Trustee Chair.
Aye.
Trustee Stewart.
Aye.
And Mayday Sherrill.
Aye.
Finally, I would ask the board to authorize the presented refunds as presented.
Sorry. I'll offer that.
I'll second. Any discussion? Ms. Walsh.
Trustee Kambari. Trustee Chang. Trustee Chair.
Aye.
Trustee Stewart.
Aye.
And Mayday Sherrill.
Aye.
Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Walsh. So now we'll move on to board reports and for this evening, I would like to go first. I have two things to report on this evening. First, I would like to congratulate trustee Stewart on her election and Chief Mike on the board, I thought I saw somewhere in the audience, for being our newest trustee. Yes, we can start using the word "be" again. The "be" trustee. Secondly, I'd like to report on is, as trustee Chang just said for the last time, that was his last motion. Usually, when I had something important to say, you wrote down, but I know that our trustee Chang wishes, I'll be brief. Archie, thank you for everything you've done for the board and the village. Back in 2015, in December, the village was going to the lodge, we just lost trustee Rattigan, we were in the middle of the casino, and the dirt track topped on us. He came in, hit the ground running, and he hasn't stopped. So, the time we spent together is something I'll always remember. Thank you for all your advice and counsel and all the friendship. But the last thing, I would just like to thank you on behalf of my family for your decades, decades of service to our village and your impact on this village has been amazing and there's thousands of people who finally get touched through all of that special. Thank you very much, very much. That be Mayday Kambari.
Thank you. I'll offer to start with what's most important. Good evening, everyone. I promised trustee Chang a one-second's tribute tonight, and I will deliver that. And so, Archie, you have created the future for our children in your eighteen years of service as a board member and president of the Floral Park Federal School District Board of Education, while simultaneously serving as a board member and president of the Sawanka Central High School District Board of Education for fifteen years, during which you welcomed our children into elementary school and years later showed many of their same hands as they walked across the stage and received their diplomas at the Floral Park Memorial High School graduation. While you sent each of us to a future that you work passionately and endlessly to create, and that will be your greatest gift and legacy forever, your greatest and most important and most meaningful ever. And from the bottom of our hearts, we thank you, Archie. We thank you for the love of your life, Denise, who's here tonight, your extraordinary family who's also here. May God bless you always.
Thank you. Trustee Stewart.
Thank you. So Archie, since you started from Littleton Village back in 1978, you immediately showed your commitment and concern about the village and your willingness to volunteer and help everybody out in this community by volunteering as a coach, then volunteering as a fire department rescue, which you served for many years, and I know you really appreciated that and you really enjoyed it, and you really helped out the community with that. Then you went to the school board, now you're here with us. We cannot thank you enough for the years of service and dedication you put into this community. Your impact on the community is overwhelming, and we thank your wife, we thank your family. We thank you for coming to this community, being a part of this community, a vital part of this community. And I also thank you personally for being a mentor and a good friend, and I know if there's any concerns that we have or any questions that we have, you'll always be there for us, because that's just the kind of person you are. We really appreciate that, Archie, and we wish you all the best, and thank you very much for your service, and I know the village and nation very much also, and we can't say enough. Thank you very much, Archie.
Trustee Stewart.
So I would like to start by thanking the residents of the village for placing their trust and confidence in me by electing me to my first full term. I'm looking forward to continuing to work with the board and Mr. Wanda Barty to keep Floral Park such a great place to live, work, and raise a family. As the newest trustee for the next two weeks, it is a great honor for me to be the last time to thank you. Thank you for your service to this community, long for you, whenever it's for board meetings and ask difficult questions, and we would always have an answer. And thank you for the advice as you sit here, elbow to elbow, making me laugh and keeping me calm, especially this first few weeks, I appreciate it. God bless you, Archie.
Thank you.
I promised Archie, well, since I gave it to him, but I now have there is one more thing I wanted to say, and Archie, this is a personal note. I talked about Archie creating the future for what I estimated to be between somewhere between four thousand and forty-five hundred children who started kindergarten and pre-k and Floral Park Federal School. But I did leave out one person, and so Archie, personally, during your decades of school board service, thank you for bringing me to Floral Park and creating my future as well.
Aye. Trustee Archie Chang for the last time on the board report.
Denise knows that I've struggled over this part of the last couple of days. Tonight will be the last time that I address the residents of our village in any sort of official capacity, and I thank them for the trust they have placed in me. For the past forty-four years, Denise and I have been extremely blessed to have lived in this village, made a living, met and made so many dear friends, and to have raised our children. Whether it was being a coach, board member in the sports leagues, volunteer firefighter, school board trustee, village prosecutor, and finally a village board trustee, I truly have all the remaining strength trying to contribute in whatever small way I could so that Floral Park remains a great place to live and to raise a family. I've had the privilege to have worked and served with so many pillars of our community, and while I am not naming all of these people, certain names like Hayden, Corbett, and Powers, and Herbst, and McDonald, and the others stand out. All of them instilled in me the desire to serve, to be a leader, and most importantly, to remain steadfast in your beliefs and opinions, while at the same time agreeing to compromise for the good of all, was not so easy when you're a hard-fought like me. I encourage every one of our residents to get involved in and participate in whatever way you can to preserve our way of life. Every one of us has talents, skills, and passions, and those traits, if utilized, will make for a better future for our village. In my opinion, the past six years, the village board did the hardest in the history of our village. We faced the possibility of a Bellon Casino, went through the environmental assessments and construction of the dirt track project, and the rebuild of a Bellon Park, and to top off everything, the COVID pandemic. We faced issues that could have disrupted our way of life, caused hardships we never could have imagined, and that could have completely changed our beloved village. I firmly believe that we did the best that we could, as those disruptions were forced upon us by forces much more powerful than us. While we were not always as successful as we wanted to be, we took every step in our power to mitigate those impacts. I want to thank mayors Kambari, Chair, and Stewart for all they have done for me and for our residents. I want to thank our local heads, Justice Hayden, Rene Marcus, Kevin Ginning, Bert Baker, Pat Aaron, John McAllister, Mike Derby, Jim Green, Steve McAllister, Mike Seville, our village administrator Jerry Bamber, our village clerk Susan Walsh, all of our village office workers and employees for all their assistance. Your efforts may might appear to go unnoticed, but this board sees your hard work, dedication, and commitment to this village every day. My final expression of thanks goes to my wife Denise, our three boys Mike, Tim, and Steve, their wives Kathy, Danell, and Genevieve, and our three grandchildren, Lila, Margaret, and Tom. Without their support, encouragement, and understanding, I could not have done what I have loved to do for the past forty-four years. I love you all. For better or worse, I'll be around more.
Archie, thank you. And with that, I ask for a motion to close this conference for the meeting, and we'll open up for questions and comments.
So moved.
Second. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Thank you. So with that, I'll open it up for any questions, comments from anyone who's thought here at Village Hall before we move on to the board. Anyone here?
Good evening.
Good evening. My name's Patricia Gallery. I live on Beverly Avenue, and I've lived there for thirty years now. Last week, I attended the zoning board meeting, and along with many of my neighbors on Beverly and Marshall avenues, we strongly oppose the variances that were being requested for the property on Hope Avenue. And I just wanted to come and speak about that again a little bit, just to share my feelings and to make sure that the town is aware of the concerns that we have for that property being the Beltway it's proposed. The two variances that they were looking for, one was parking, the other one was square footage, are a lot of concerns to parking, which has always been a little challenging in that area of town, but we've dealt with it, and we just feel that the addition of ten families in that small area with the parking that's there now, it's just going to be an added burden to the neighborhood and could quite possibly change the feeling of our, our area of town. There's going to be a lot more cars, more traffic, the parking that's being provided by the builder is not going to take care of the residents that are put there, certainly will not take care of the visitors that those families will have. There's no visiting parking being provided, and our streets are full, so I just want the town to, you know, I don't know when the zoning board makes their decision, we all presented our feelings, but I don't know when the decision's being made or which way it's going to go, but I just wanted to be here tonight to just bring that up to everyone here, that it is a big concern. We'd like, you know, that to be taken into consideration.
As you may think, a few comments, as you may know, the zoning board is independent board, that, you know, we do not influence, you know, their decision, it's their decision.
Okay, I didn't know, I just wanted to make as much.
That's fine, that's fine.
Noise as I could, and, you know, it's just going to affect the way we work on that, and a lot of us have been there a long time, and we like, we'd like to keep it as quiet as possible.
And if it is approved, the next step is a process, and the next step would be your picture review board, which will have a site plan, a lot more information on the look and feel of it.
Do you know what the timeline is for the zoning board, when they would decide on last week's meeting?
Not sure yet, maybe, maybe tomorrow, maybe two weeks from now.
Okay. All right, that's it. Thank you for listening.
And we'll get it out to the local civic association.
Is that where we would hear the decision first?
Yeah, we typically have the decision debate on an extended list of announcements and decisions, and the civic association president would be copied in on it, so we'll make sure that the local president gets it.
Okay. Thanks, Eric.
Dr. Kambari, question, something else?
Well, thank you very much for coming in, and we will certainly be forward to the decisions as well as the schedule for when the object will be ordered. That's also published on the website, it's listed, and the president of the press today usually posts all that information, in this case probably will.
So the zoning board grants the variances, isn't it ideal, or it also has to be waited by the upper check?
It goes several times.
It includes several of the others.
All right, thank you.
Hi, everyone. I'd like to speak about where I'm living and the situation downstairs. I live above Gray Studios in the front second floor.
I'm sorry, I'm just getting into.
I'm sorry, my name is Lucille Gallow. All right. So I just prepared a little thing here. My son and I moved into the second floor front apartment above Gray Studios in August of 2019. Due to the COVID shutdown and everything, the owner decided to close the business, sold the building in December of 2020. The studio was put up for lease, a commercial property, and it was finally rented last October of 2021. Since the tenants have been there, they've had loud parties, blasting music that have carried on to the early morning hours. My apartment is filled with the smell of marijuana, and I really have no call to your life here since they moved in. In December 2021, the rear tenants that were there before I moved in, they moved out, and the business tenant downstairs moved in. So he runs the business, and he lives in the rear apartment. People attending the events frequently ring my bell, and they hoover outside my bedroom window at all hours of the night and early morning. There are postings, advertised events that include strippers, jokes and toques, hookah, beer and wine, live music, dinner, paint and sip, nudity, renting out the space to parties, and their business hours on their website are listed as Monday through Wednesday, ten thirty a.m. to one a.m., and Thursday through Sunday, all day, twenty-four hours. My son is out on a medical leave from St. John's University with anxiety issues, and he's under the care of a team of doctors. The situation downstairs is affecting him and me in a very negative way. I've always been a respectful tenant. I actually welcomed these people when I first met them and congratulated them and wished them luck on their business. I had no idea what it would turn out to be. I wish these issues, I do look forward to them being addressed. I have contacted and gone in person to the building department, spoken to numerous people there, showed them the postings and everything. The police department, I called the police department once, I think it was maybe two a.m., the whole building was shaking, and the officer I looked at, I went, I told him to lower it, but as soon as he left, they just made it loud, there was no sleeping for us that night. And unfortunately, about twenty minutes after the officer said that, somebody ran up the stairs and was banging on my apartment door. Maybe I should have called the police back, but I didn't, I just didn't answer the door. So now, they're in the rear apartment, and they're downstairs, and they have the backyard and the basement. So the bottom line is, now there are postings on the Floral Park Facebook page, and he's saying very vile things about my son, false words about me, and he's very aggressive. I'm getting to the point now where I'm concerned for my safety, since he not only has the key to the business, but also has access to the stairs and is in the rear apartment, so it's a very tense situation. And the building inspector did contact me the other day, and he said he was coming to look into this, but it's getting very out of hand. The fact that it happens at late hours, I don't think most people in the village should know, because it's on Main Street, and this is like an open, so finally get to addressing.
Sure, so, first and foremost, if you ever feel you should call the police, call the police, don't hesitate, okay? That's number one. The police commissioner has had contact with your landlord, and additionally with the DC, they've been informed of what the rules are, what they can and cannot do, what the police can and cannot do, because I know you rattle off a list of things, we've also seen those, and both of those are not permitted, and the police are aware, can we just make sure that they're aware of this?
Sure, we were aware of one other event earlier, a couple of months back, we shut that down, it was a, I forget the guy.
I saw, it was a concert, but.
That's correct, it was a recording session, right. Yeah, I know, I know about this, that was my conversation this week.
It's coming Saturday.
So, well, Sunday, actually, Sunday.
Oh, I'm sorry, Sunday, yeah.
So, Rene Marcus, the building superintendent over there, myself, we've been in discussion, obviously, with the board and John Martin with regards to this. I've talked to the landlord, the owner of the building was in my office yesterday, had a long conversation. He has since tried to break the lease now with his tenant, I don't know how successful he will be, but I know that he did serve legal notice to his attorney. We are going to do our best as far as all the areas we can have oversight onto any type of business that enters into our community, which includes buildings, us, fire marshals, health department, and any other governmental agency that would have oversight onto these types of buildings. So there will be, because of some of his adverts, and we've also been reading the Facebook threads, but if you ever feel threatened, you need to call us, 911. I, I don't know about some of these issues you've spoken about.
It's rough.
And I don't doubt it, yes, absolutely, call us, please. Whatever we can do to relieve your anxiety or any of the issues that are going on, you should not feel threatened in your home.
I also spoke with Detective.
Please call us, yes.
King Val, I reached out to many people.
Yeah, Detective King is well aware, and he's been on top of this.
Spoke to them, but they continually do stuff even after the police come, and so that's the issue right now. Would they have to leave the apartment, or just the business, how does that work? Because they're in the rear.
So that's a whole other issue?
It's not, it's not really in the purview.
It is not.
So, between the landlord and the tenant, right.
Okay.
So right now, I'm concerned with the advert that you had just said, that's what we're dealing with right now?
And the marijuana, it's pretty bad.
Unfortunately, the New York State legislators have taken that out of the purview of the police department, we no longer can really enforce most marijuana violations.
It is necroastic.
But you can. They'll give a time, they'll just follow.
The New York State legislators are. Ma'am, I'm sorry, can I ask you, have you opened to your landlord as well?
I have. I've spoken to him on the phone, and then the last time I paid the rent, I saw him in person, and I said, can I show you the flyers? He said email them to me, so I did.
Okay, so you're aware of all of this as well?
Yeah, it's the landlord, the landlord, and neighbors, and I have some neighbors here that know what I'm talking about.
The police actually are populous, and, you know, please call if we feel threatened, okay? And hopefully we see improvement in the next week or so.
I hope so. Thank you very much for hearing me.
And when they come and they address the situation, if something happens again, call them again. Commissioner is correct, you should not feel unsafe in your home. Call them again and again and again.
All right. Thank you.
Thank you.
Appreciate it.
Hi, my name is Brian DiNaroya, I'm neighbors and friends with Lucille, and I actually made a post on Facebook, and I said, just to see the strippers.
Can I stop this, Miss Shaw, if you know this is in, I'm still afraid, it's probably slow.
Yeah. So since I made that post, this person has been almost threatening me for trying to disrupt his business, and I also know that since we did start all the phone calls and, you know, what have you, that he's almost taking it out on her and her son, and making a lot of noises and trying to distract her son, is having issues, and it's just, it's, again, it's not, it's not, I raised my kids here for the last, you know, twenty-six years, and it's not the Floral Park high that, you know, we all grew up with when we watched the team here, and I feel like we're all being, whoever spoke against it is now being like verbally threatened and harassed online. Basically, it was just to add an addition to the list.
One of the best parts of the Flower Park, they have our police department, and things get addressed immediately.
Appreciate it.
I know the commissioner, the tenants, and everyone that are populous, that are populous we, I know a number of problems.
And I would just question you and everyone else, that rather than air grievances on Facebook or other social media outlets? Facebook or other social media outlets, at least call us first and let us know about it, because a lot of times, we're learning about it through Facebook, and that's not the way I should be getting advice of ongoing problems. And rather, you pick up the phone and call us direct, tell us exactly what's going on, trust it, get it through a Facebook thread or some social media thread, that's just not good policing. So, I just ask you that you do that. I don't care what you do as far as social media, that's your business, but just give us a heads up first, so we know about it. And I will address these concerns. I can assure you of that.
Commissioner, is it accurate to say that every single one of your officers is aware of the situation and has seen this?
Yes, they are.
Thank you.
I remember, they have called many times. That's why they keep frustrated, it's been going on for a very long time, and that's why they needed to finally protect themselves from this, that they're banging doors, they're knocking on a door till 4:00 in the morning. So that's why they felt that they had to go to Facebook. Not because, you know, our generation is not Facebook, you know, we're not really into all social media, but they were afraid, and that's why.
Call the police, call, you know, call my-
They did, they called many times, so we'll keep on going, thank you very much.
Okay. Anyone else here who'd really call?
My name is John O'Quinn, I'm the 24th marshal that moved.
How do we fight the building of the apartments above the scores?
We're gonna get petitions going, we're having people sidestep. We need to have, we get piecemeal from every time the other meeting. The zoning board, we're all allowed to argue the zoning board's complaints, you know, the size of the parking lot, the size of the square footage of the apartments upstairs, we couldn't say anything else. Is there a way we could get a trustee, a department of buildings, the architecture review board, and the zoning board together to discuss this with the people from Marshall and the next one?
Right, so the process is moving along, right, so zoning has a specific purview, and then the next process will be if they do improve it, it will go to ARB to discuss the whole thing inclusive of how traffic's gonna flow and all that's concerned.
Because that's gonna be a gigantic problem. We have a problem there now, and it's just gonna get worse. I've lived there 38 years, and we've never had a problem like this before. I wish this place would look right now. Now it's a gigantic problem, and I don't see how, I don't see how cars are gonna fit back there, being that we have SUVs and pickup trucks and everything else, they're not gonna fit these flats. They're made for Ugos or Corollas and stuff. It's not gonna, it's not gonna work. And the joyous fumes and everything else, it's, we're backing them up on some people's property, and they've been there for years. And we all want, you know, we all want to live in a nice community, but it's not gonna happen after this gets put through.
As you may know, it is zoned for what they offer.
I understand it's zoned, I understand, it's a B2, it's zoned, it's not R1, I understand that, and they can't have restaurants unless they're variance, I understand all that.
So, just, over the course of the years, specifically around Jerrito Turnpike where-
Like Jerrito Turnpike, yes, excuse me, sorry.
That the process worked, and then a lot of changes made to the design, once it got to different parts of the process, including ARB. Wendy wanted two dry fronts, they only became one. 7-Eleven's another example there, a lot of opposition, but we made design changes so that it doesn't work.
When they tore up Jerrito Turnpike years ago, the south side of Jerrito Turnpike stayed the same, the north side changed. The south side, it was all grandfathered in, all these apartments on top. They have parking behind it, they have municipal parking lots and stuff, we don't have that yet. We don't have anything like that yet. So, I just would like to have a meeting with a bunch of people together before this nostracity gets us.
Okay, the ARB will be the next step.
Okay, but, like I said, if we can get the, if we can get the people from Marshall and the rest of them together and talk with people, maybe we're gonna understand this better.
And then you see the construction documents, you see more of the project, I think.
Okay, thank you.
You're welcome, thank you. Thank you, sir.
Oh, yeah. I don't think, you know, I have to say something, especially on the office last night. I made little notes, I wanted to thank Frank for reaching out with the head issues and the scams and what I'm trying to do, yes. Archie, I thank you at the last meeting, after what I dealt with the railroad this week, I'm really good at this, if you could, at some point, maybe give me phone numbers or advice, I would appreciate it, on how to deal with it, or how not to rip my ear out of my head. And Lynn, I thank you in advance for my future comments or showing up at meetings and whatnot. And you also need some help. I was at the zoning board the other night also, and I'm really unfazed about it, I really feel good for the residents, I have to look at it from a business point of view also. I would prefer more foot traffic, more retail, bring the town back to its quaintness, what people came there for. There's always gonna be a parking issue, and my opinion is, for that piece of property, it is quite good. I felt a little intimidated the other night, I came up to speak, I was very intimidated, and I said, I don't wanna speak. One of the things besides the businesses that bothered me is that, I think some of the residents, just like this gentleman said, it's in my notes, I think, because it's so close to the homes, that instead of just these big meetings and zoning board meetings and big words blowing out and the attorney had to answer for everything, that a smaller gathering, one-on-one with the community, with the COVID-19 chamber, you know, the businesses involved, so people could understand this better and maybe have their questions or if they don't understand anything, explained better to them. Of course, it was very cut and dry the other night, and I really don't think that was too fair to the residents or the businesses. I think there should be a little bit more expansion, especially when you don't understand it, and you come into the meeting and you feel things are already set in place.
That meeting had a specific purpose, right? It was, you know, very narrow focused with the parking, you know, the variance was formed.
Right, and I think, I think for all the less included residents, that there should be a meeting with a little bit wider scope, especially for some of the residents that have been there for a long time, that are having a hard time understanding, someone to explain it to them and help them understand it better.
Okay, I've had some discussions with Dr. Moni, but that's exactly true, so.
Yes, because that really upset me the other night about that, you know. And then with that being said, yeah, just basically more foot traffic, maybe I would like to try to get more of the businesses involved, I wonder when the next zoning appeal board meeting will be coming up again?
The next meeting with this project, we present a meeting in architecture review board.
And are you guys interested?
The third, Wednesday, every Monday?
Usually, yes, the schedule's on the website.
Right, and the agenda's posted on Monday?
Likely Monday.
Monday, so I'll be on this.
And same thing, like now I'm driving around looking at other businesses, the apartments, but everybody seems to have a lot of municipal parking, a lot of more space than we have down there, you know. And I'm at the other end of the street, and I have a problem, I can't even imagine being placed in the middle of the street with all the congestion. But that was it, I just, I just was hoping for more of a meeting that more questions and a broader spectrum could be brought into work.
Okay, we'll come back to that.
Thank you very much.
Mary, you don't have to get up if you don't want to.
Can I speak?
Yeah, you can speak, you don't have to get up if you don't want to. I know-
Can you put one down?
Definitely. How are you, Mayor?
I'm Eric Petrosino, I'm here to represent the senior's Floral Park. As you know, I wrote you a letter, but there are many things that are not in that letter I would like to bring to your attention, and I would like to know, maybe, I don't have an explanation for what I'm going to tell you, but I feel we are being deprived and discriminated against. All the other areas, as you know, Almont Franklin Square, anyone in the town has said, they have their own centers.
Their own, what?
They have their own centers. They pay less taxes than us. Now, we are three different areas in St. Hedrick's senior centers, Fowlers, Flower Park, and I understand New Hard Park is included in them. We pay the highest taxes. All these other centers are getting much more than us. They get five days a week from 9 to 5. We get two days a week from 9 to 2. They get, they don't have to pay dues, they just sign in. We have to pay our dues. We have to get up and get our own coffee and dessert, they are served. When there is a holiday, like a Christmas, a special luncheon we have, we have to have a certain amount of attendance. If someone misses one or two days, they have to pay extra, which is not fair, because someone can get sick, and they gotta be deprived and have the same privilege of the others. Another thing, oh, say I have a visitor, I pay for my luncheon, Christmas luncheon, if I don't attend, I lose it, so I naturally want to bring my relative or whoever is with me to the luncheon. Even if we want to pay for them, they can't have it because they're not members, and that is not so in any other area. I'll see if there's anything else. Oh, even like the dues, where you get coffee and dessert, we have a person who's not a member, you want to pay for that person, they can't have it. Yet there's enough food, even with the luncheon or the special dinners, if there's any left bowl of food, they bring it home, and why deprive somebody of having any, staying there watching everybody else? So, I think I handled everything I wanted to say, and I hope you can do some for us. I don't know, I have an explanation, why our center is handled different than others.
Mary, thanks for coming, I'm actually a dealer, I'm not familiar with, you know, working in the sector, but let me do some research and we'll come back, yeah?
Thank you.
The good news is, the weather's turning along, and I know where you will be.
Thank you very much, yeah.
Thank you, Mayor.
Mayor, thank you.
I believe they want to vote for Mayor Daley. Here's one reason, one reason only for Archie. Well, you guys should know, I've always looked up to Archie my entire life. When I was in grade school, when he broke, so was a policeman in Floral Park, loved to chase the fires, and I was a neighbor, we'd go to the fire, and Archie always made a point at rescue calls and talked to us. To day forward to becoming a free policeman, I get the privilege of working in the score house, Archie was a prosecutor, I was going to law school, I looked up to him, I followed what he did. Ultimately became a prosecutor, but I got to work for him. Everything I did in my life was something Archie had something to do with. Things got tough, they were crazy about it, he stood up for me, and I'll always be indebted to him. Congratulations, and thank you for your service.
Now, Mr. Walsh's person, Deputy Chief Executive, I guess he jumps over to the judge, but that's okay. I'm here also to recognize, Lynn, you summed up eloquently Archie's service with regard to the Board of Education. Archie's friendship has meant so much to me, he has set the gold standard for what a prosecutor should be in this village. I had the ability to observe that as a young village prosecutor, thinking I knew everything as an assistant district attorney in Anheuser County, until I saw how Archie treated the people, his relationship with the esteemed Judge Bednoff, my predecessor. And many people don't know, my dad had a very good knack of finding talent and seeing talent, and I think Archie told me the story, when he was studying, right next to Dalton's, when he was living in the apartments there, my dad came off the train, and they started a conversation, and my dad said, hey, I'm looking for a village prosecutor, and that became Archie Chang, the village prosecutor at Floral Park. On behalf of the courts that's here, Mr. Walsh, Mr. Conway, Mr. Moan, and Associate Justice Perry Costelli, Archie, we want to thank you for everything you have done for us and this village board, and for this village, and I'm gonna miss so much our social gatherings, where he gave you what was going on, right like that, always to the point, so thank you very much, Archie, God bless.
First, you all, the mayor, I'm gonna have to correct the car, Judge, I had opened my practices, and we had no, I had no work. I was sitting back in front of the high ground of Dalton's, because I was waiting for the phone to ring. So Tom Haden walks up to me and says, I see the practice, I'm not doing so well, because it's sunny and I was sitting in the lunchroom. And he said, would you like to be assistant prosecutor? And this is 1985, I believe. And I said, does it pay? He goes, every time you go to court, it'll pay you 50 bucks. Well, that paid the groceries for the family for the week. And I just say, for heaven, your father's dead, for what he did, that's, so that's a big thing.
Anyone else here who'd favor our values?
I would, sir.
Good.
Congratulations, I didn't even know you were the mayor.
All people, thank you.
That's how much I know. I didn't know this about this project, what is it, what is Archie, what number, again?
A COVID-19.
Yeah. I've been living in Floral Park for a while, I've been involved in a lot of, I guess, one events, maybe with the kids and other land activities. And the only thing I can offer is Floral Park Village, a lot of people move in because of the village itself, it's a nice community, it's vibrant, it's good for kids, it's good, hopefully for seniors. And I'm totally against this project with the second floor, and an example of what could happen is, with a lady at, in an apartment, she's having all these issues, can you imagine 10 apartments, and we never know who moves in there, you would never know who you rent or who you depend there, just a good example of what could happen. The commander knows that Beverly is a big traffic place, a lot of cars, a lot of buses, parking issues, sanitation, it's because we're in the end, and we don't want to add to that by those apartments, so I'd say, think about it, guys, very thoroughly, what could happen to the community with those apartments. The stores are fine, people craving down, the stores coming back, they say we can't wait for the pizza place to come back, we went there, the apartments are not for that area, especially two houses on the corner, the effect they drive dramatically with noise pollution, fuels from the cars, and they're right there, right next to those parking facilities. So if you guys would just look at- So if you guys would just look at the project, how is it going to change the texture of Flower Park Village? Thank you for listening. I hope I could get through a little bit. And congratulations again.
Paul Sager, congratulations, and I'm going to miss you. And just one thing I wanted to say about the police department here at Flower Park, for those that may have had a problem. The other night, it was pitch dark, somebody knocks on the door, look out. I opened the, not the storm door, but the other door. I said, do you have a permit? Oh, yeah, I have it in my pocket. So I said, well, I'm not interested in what you have. And I promptly went to the phone, called the police. Not one car, but three cars came. And sure enough, the guy didn't have a permit. He was doing what he was doing illegally. And at least we felt relieved, and the police did their job. Thank you.
Anyone else here who would like to call before I go to Zoom, folks on Zoom. I'll leave Zoom. Do you want to, have to raise your hand?
You can raise your hand. There's a message in the chat from, is that from our...
Yeah, sure, so, there is. My landlord, thank you, Archie, for your many years of service to the Village of Flower Park, just wishes to you in your next check.
Thanks, David.
I don't see any questions.
Okay, thank you for everyone coming out this evening, and Archie will miss you.